We call the meeting to order. It is Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, and the time is seven eleven P M. Um, this meeting, uh, the public meeting, uh, being video and audio recorded for a cable broadcast. So if we could just please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first in-person meeting in.
Forever.
Over a year, over a year.
Yep.
Unbelievable. Alright, so, um, before, we're actually gonna skip over the confirmed new media, uh, meeting date. Actually, we will, I guess we probably do that now in case you have any cases that are continued. So the next meeting date we have is July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, if we stuck to the regular schedule, uh, zoning board meetings. Um, now because of the, uh, plan that was put into by the governor that we are allowed to meet, um, on Zoom or, uh, in Zoom, on Zoom, uh, Zoom until April first, twenty-twenty-two. And, uh, we can change that per meeting, we can say going forward, um. But I know the last meeting we had Greg, who was not able to make it tonight, he had some pretty, he had some thoughts about meeting in person versus, uh, versus Zoom. So I figured until he was here to discuss, you know, going forward, if you wanna say every meeting, that I guess we'll probably set for the July meeting to be on Zoom. Is that okay with everybody, or does anyone have any strong opposition to that?
I don't have enough opposition to it, um. I think for July, we could do that one, but I think after that, we're, when I just, we need to discuss it then, whether we wanna go back to, um, in-person meetings, or we wanna be able to do a hybrid version after.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to do Zoom for the next meeting, if, if Greg was here tonight, that, you know, we might not even be discussing it, but because he's not here, she's able to voice his opinions, I know he had some thoughts about meeting in person, so I figured we'll do Zoom to make sure he's comfortable with everything, and then if we decide then, you know, we'll look at it for in person, and that's fine, but I figured just for now, we might as well.
That's fine.
How about everyone down there, sound good? Okay. Um, so we can go right into the next, but the first, uh, case tonight. Public hearing, variance application, Bristol County Agricultural High School, one thirty-five, Center Street, uh, map five lot seventy-nine, case zero-two dash twenty-one, uh, Jonathan, can we have, uh, three, uh, voting members, please?
I will designate yourself, your father, and myself, um, Susan, I don't wanna put you in that position yet, your first, your first day here.
So just, uh, just, just coming up for the public, my father and I, obviously we are related, um. The attorney general said they are fine with us being on the same case, just as long as we make the disclaimer, and if applicant obviously objects, then we can obviously, uh, assign a new member. Do you have any objection to that?
I don't see an objection.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, so you're all set, if you wanna just, uh, state your name for the record, and then you may start whenever you're ready.
Uh, my name is Robert Williams, I'm with H F H Architects, and I'm the lead architect of Bristol County Agricultural High School. And I'm here with Adele Sanz.
And the superintendent of Bristol Aggie.
Thank you. So the reason we are here today is, I'm sure everybody knows, the new school is nearly complete, and we were talking about, um, exterior signage for the school building committee. And the current sign is a static sign that has, um, letters that can be changed. Um, it's, it's a very difficult sign to change, and it doesn't have much use for the school. Um, so what we were proposing with a lot of new schools that are, um, looking to have better communication with the community, and to provide information about the school, but also have the ability to actually provide emergency information within a community, we're looking to, um, seek a variance to, uh, put an elec- uh, electronic sign in lieu of the existing sign. So, what I had shared originally, just to give an overview of the campus, this is Center Street, the new two buildings, Center for Science and Student Com- Commons Building, on the north side.
Excellent.
Hope it's that few, you wanna say it all? On the south side, we have Gilbert Hall and Agmech Building, which are existing buildings with floor culture and landscape harbor. The existing sign is located here, approximately, almost directly across from, um, a butter lot number forty. Um, I provided three views of the proposed sign, these, this is actually a rendering of the proposed sign. So what you're seeing here, I can show a, 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 another graphic, but the existing sign. Set this down now, 'cause I think it'll be easier if I can pull this one up. The new proposed sign is actually, the, the existing sign, sorry, is at, at twelve-foot elevation right now, so it's much higher. The new sign would be brought down to a seven-foot-ten would be the top of the sign, and it'd be mounted on a new boulder that was, um, discovered while excavating. So there's a large boulder, it's pretty flat, uh, so this is a rendering of that boulder and the sign. Just to give everyone a, uh, example of what it would look like. It's approximately nine feet wide, the, the actual display board, electronic display board would be double-sided. Um, it's actually only six feet long and about three feet tall. So the extra three feet that you're seeing would be the Bristol Aggie logo, that would be looking to just have backlit, so it would just be a kind of a glowing sign. Students would make the sign, it would be, um, cut metal, sheet metal that would be mounted in there, and it would be just backlit. The proposed location again of the sign, just to go back to here, so now that we kind of understand what the sign looks like, would be perpendicular to the street, so as you're approaching from the bridge, you'd be able to see it when you get closer, and as you're approaching from, um, Main Street up here, you'd be able to see it from the other side. Um, the, because it would be perpendicular, looking from the butters, this was a picture taken from across the street, they would not really, they would not see any of the glowing of the sign directly into their purview, it would, it would illuminate to one side or the other. Um, again, as you're coming up Main Street, if everyone's driven up, not Main Street, up Center Street, you, you know there's heavy foliage right now, so the sign is actually protected by a lot of the foliage, um, so it's, it is visible, but it's still somewhat hidden within there. Um, there were some questions that I believe were asked about, um, specifications, so we don't have actual specifications yet for the sign, because we will be, um, it is a public bid situation, so we'll be putting out, um, ideas, and working with an existing, um, we'll be working with an existing, um, vendor, sign, signage vendor. This is, um, a submittal from a recent high school we completed in Saugus. This is the product they received, so I just wanted to bring that to highlight a few things. Um, the very back, it talks about the adjustable brightness. So these signs, all these electronic signs have a lot of capability now where, um, they have sensors in them, so during the day, they become much brighter, but at nighttime, they would dim to a, a lower level to adjust for the, um, brightness. So you wouldn't have this, you know, you, you wouldn't have to have a, a manual operator going in there saying, let's keep it really bright, and it's just really bright at night, and so it, it dims to the level of darkness. Guess I could turn it over for questions, if, if there's questions.
I'm not sure, does anyone on the, on the board have questions first?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, is it worth changing the character of the neighborhood in the town, um, for the sun? You've made it for a hundred years without it, uh, uh, the high school doesn't have one, the police department doesn't have one, gas stations don't have one. Why should you have one? When we don't allow them?
Um, I, I think just the, the nature of, of moving with, with technology in the future, and, um, the ability to communicate more rapidly. You know, we, we live in a time now where, um, information, rapid information is important. So I think, um, allowing the school to put out the appropriate information, both for what's happening in the school, but also in emergency situations. This is a, a campus, so the students are outside a lot, um, they're not always inside, so this was another, um, discussion with the school that said, if the students are outside, how do we communicate with them? We have exterior speakers, but they also could broadcast messages to the students.
Well, if you, if you've been able to converse with them for the last, like I said, one hundred years, I already forget the hundred year mark, but twenty-five years, why all of a sudden the need for, I mean, it's a big thing for this town to have a sign that's flashing or, or rotating or illuminating a neighborhood when we're a rural town, we're not o- other towns where they're accepted, we don't even allow the signs out front of town hall to be a, a rotating sign or illuminated sign. I mean, you're talking about doing a lot, changing a lot for this town. And, and I just wonder if your argument that we need to communicate better with our students when, how many students do you have?
Uh, it'll be six hundred and forty students.
So you, you're equivalent to what the high school has, and they don't seem to have the need to have a, a sign outside of theirs.
Sure. And I, I guess, with, just the nature, I think, points are, are worth taking.
Oh, I'm not trying to give you high time, I, I guess, it would be a drastic step, that's all.
No, I understand, and I, I, I. Sure, um, Adele might help, yes.
Sure.
Well, we, uh, one of the things that is growing with this school, one of the visions of this school is that as we, we really look at ourselves as a center for science now, and we, uh, part of what we're trying to do is be much more of a community center and a center for organizations. We're gonna s- uh, start using our new student commons, in fact, the town of Taunton, the Taunton mayor came and had a meeting in the student commons today. We really want to use the school as a place for our member towns and also the, our farmers. We wanna do a lot of educational, we're an agricultural school, we do a lot of really interesting things in our school, and we want to be able to welcome the, welcome our visitors, welcome our dignitaries. We have a lot of important people who come to our school, and we like to be able to, I mean, we're not looking at having something that's zippy and flashy.
Right, it's done in a classy, oh, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, it's not our idea to have some, you know, thing, you know, maybe at graduation, we would have something that says, congratulations, class of twenty-twenty-one. But other than that, it's, it's more about, we have foremen going up and, eh, putting up little letters, and it just, it's a very dated way of communicating, it's not an effective way, we can't put too much on the sign, and so the foremen are go- are out there doing this, and what we're thinking more is it's just, it's not gonna be complicated and, and crazy-looking, but it's just a way for somebody to sit, type on the computer, get more information out more quickly to more people. And, and as the school becomes, you know, our, a real state-of-the-art center for science, we want all aspects of the school to look like the future for our kids.
Um, and is your intention to have the sign, all the, uh, displays to be in color, or is it gonna be black and white, or is it gonna be like monochrome? Do you know, like, what kind of setting you're gonna have on it?
Um, I mean, it is a full video screen, so they would have the full range of colors, but I think like what Adele was, was speaking to, um, it's more for messaging, so it's more for, um, lettering, so I guess what color the letter would be probably, over time, just determining what is the most effective way to contrast with the, the video screen, so I don't think I give you an exact, um, answer for that.
I guess I only ask because, like, I know they're just examples, but, you know, the one with the American flag with the grand opening in, in yellow letters, to me, that seems too bold, too bold for the area, but then again, if it was something more like the trick-or-treat one, that's kind of just like monochrome colors, not saying that it makes it better, but it makes it, I guess, a little less flashy, no pun intended, so I wasn't sure, I guess, what the mind, the idea was as to the color scheme that you'd be using.
I can say unequivocally, because we are Bristol Aggie, and we're, everything we've done and the building itself, everything is in very subtle earth tones, and we're all, everything inside the building, so it goes against, uh, it goes against everything about the design we've done and all of our work to have anything flashy. In fact, I live, I don't know, any of the Old Rochester High School, if you ever go by Old Rochester, they have a big sign, and I go past it all the time, and I think, not that. That would not be what we do, because it's, it's just so bright and so, and maybe it fits with them, but it wouldn't fit with the culture of our school.
So let me, let me ask, and forgive if, if this sounds silly, but since I don't have vision, um, I can't see the signs, although I had it one time, so I have an idea of what you're, I think, what you're proposing. But let me ask you, in terms of the signage itself, is the sign, the sign's gonna be illuminated on both sides, am I correct?
Correct.
Will both sides always have the same information? Or can one side have one piece of information and one have the other? People are coming from two different directions.
So, I, I believe, because it would be two separate monitors, that you probably could have, um, different, different, um, displays on, on either side. Uh, I think the school would most likely have the same display on both sides, I don't see a reason why they would want to, but I, but to your point, you are coming from different directions, so if incoming traffic needs one information and.
Well, that, well, that kind of segues into, to my next question then, which is, for the signage that you're proposing, will the sign, for example, is it only going to be used to put information announcements for the school, or also for the communities that are around them? So for example, if we have a town meeting in November, can we put that on one side of the sign? And can, will this, will you, are you allowed to do that, or are we? So I'll probably direct that to the superintendent.
Sure, the so- short answer would be, we would be happy to do that. Um, the other thing that we haven't mentioned is, we have no interest in having the sign on at night. It's unless, let's say, the town wanted it for, you know, there's an election, and the town said, could you have it on at night? The sign would go off.
Could you, could you just define what night means? Like sunset, or is it gonna be like set on a set time regardless of the time of the year?
I think, well, that's a, that's hard for me to, I, I know that we're not going to have it on, you know, when there are no students, unless somebody, unless the town asks for it specifically, when everybody's gone home. If there's an event, for instance, our foundation dinner that starts at six o'clock at night, and it goes till eight, we would keep the sign on from six to seven, saying, welcome to the Bristol Aggie Foundation Dinner. Those are just examples.
I think, I think the, the part of the, part of that would be, um, so I'm gonna go back to, to what I was asking a minute ago first. So in terms of, if we had a, a town meeting in November, for example, can that be potentially on one side of it, but then at the same time, you could have Berkeley having something else? And they would like it on the other side, so as you're going towards Berkeley, from Dayton, you see the Berkeley component, and as you're coming from Berkeley towards Dayton, you see the Dayton component.
Absolutely.
That is, so is that possible?
I, I, I don't know, and honestly, I don't know specifically with the technology, it would be two separate monitors, so my understanding would be, yes, that would be possible. Um, but I can't hundred percent commit to you right now and say, yes, that would be possible.
And my, the second part then, I, along with what, what Zach was just asking a little bit, in terms of the, the signage and the lighting at night, um, you know, it would make sense to me, and I, I know you said the brightness can be controlled, um, and I assume it can be controlled automatically, and weather conditions, and, you know, all sorts of things, however, keeping in mind what, what, what we're thinking about too, would make sense to me that this approval potentially include a statement in which you would agree to have the sign not illuminated after a certain time at night, for example, nine o'clock.
That's true.
Throw that out there. And not before six A M., for example.
Yes, I think that's very reasonable.
Are there any more questions for the board before we turn over to the butters?
I have some more, but I'm not ready, so you can continue.
I have one question.
Sure.
Sure.
Is it that involved to change this, the lettering or the, you know, the logo, whatever you're changing manually? That, which is the way they're doing it now?
Sure, I, I think, uh, to Adele's point, they're usually taking a couple foremen, they go out, um, it's a little bit higher right now, so it's a little bit harder, 'cause they have to climb higher to do it, but, um.
Now, if you change it, if you stick with changing it manually, are you going to change the si- the size and the height? And are you gonna follow the same new size?
Um, that hasn't been discussed, so I would have to discuss that with the school building committee before I could commit to that. Um, but in terms of changing, i- it's also the, the rapidness, so whatever they put up there, you know, if it takes two to three hours to change it out, one hour, depending on how long the message is, 'cause they're finding all the letters, and they're putting them up, and they're pulling off the plexiglass, I believe, that they have to unscrew and then screw back on to get it all up, so I think it's a pretty involved process, from my understanding, and talking a little bit with the foreman. Um, that message then would wanna stay up for, you know, a few days at least. Um, but, I, as we were just talking about, different events, if you wanted to announce a town hall meeting, if you wanna do, um, uh, different dignitaries are coming in from different towns to say, hey, you know, park here, go to the, go to the student commons, all those, all that messaging would be too complicated to switch out. It would, it would take too long for them to, to have the ability to communicate differently in a, in a rapid fashion. I think that's, that's part of, part of the concern with the current sign and, and wanting to go in this direction.
Alright, so if the butters, uh, have any questions, they can, just make sure you state your name and your address for the record. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, Elijah Kuchar, one seventy-six, Center Street. And, uh, as the architect and as the superintendent, I'd like to preface my comments by commending you on the design and the beauty of the campus, and keeping it in character with our neighborhood and with our town. That being said, as Mr. Karen stated, that's my major concern, that when we put up this electronic sign, my hope was, quite frankly, that once you were finished with the addition and you were looking to things like this sign, that perhaps the sign that's presently there that's illuminated would be reconsidered to something that would be more appropriate and more in tune with the rural nature of the town, and the fact that we have this beautiful bridge, we come over across the river, and we have a business right on the corner, um, the dentist's office and the insurance agency, and they have a, I'm thinking, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a wooden sign. They don't have anything illuminated, and that's a business, that's right up on the corner. Um, I can't see the sign with the foliage now, probably not, but from my home and from my kitchen, I can't see the sign. When it first came up and it was an illuminated sign, I was quite surprised that the town allowed that even. And so now, when I think of a sign that, I know you, you'll keep it aesthetically, um, in tune with what you're trying to accomplish at the school right now, and the campus, and the town, and the neighborhood, and I appreciate that. That being said, it will still be an illuminated sign, flashing, we're talking about the possibility of two different things, one coming from one direction, one coming from the other direction. Um, I just don't see how that keeps everything in character with the town and the neighborhood. And you have done that so far, so a- as a resident, and as, you know, someone in the neighborhood, it would be disappointing to see how pleased I think we are with what's been done, I'm only taking this up, what's been done so far. I, I, I'm speaking for myself, but not.
No, no, absolutely, and I think that's why we're trying to put the sign in that big block that we found, so that it really does fit into the nature of what's happening. And if you go into the C- Center for Science, I mean, there's that big building, and I'd love to take anybody through it who would like to come in. I mean, it really is a, a state-of-the-art building. And our students have, you know, we are going, we have, um, they're, they're one-to-ones, a- and when you say flashing, I, this sign will not flash. I mean, when I said maybe graduation, we would have something that said, you know, congratulations, graduates for one day, but it's not flashing, it would just be, it would look, the idea is that it would look very similar to what you have, what we have right then. It'd be s- same kind of messaging, it would just be a lot easier to read, and we can get a lot more information, and we can turn it over more quickly.
So it won't be a constant changing message, it'll be like one message, and then whenever you guys go have to change it, you'll change it, but it won't be like, set like four different signs within the span of like two minutes kind of thing?
Oh, no, 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 eh, eh, no, that's not the plan, to have some rotating, eh, eh, the, the plan is to have messaging, you know, so that we can put more up for, you know, that, but we're be- we're trying to be incredibly thoughtful about keeping it, and I mean, it is our intention to keep it looking like a, a, the school it's supposed to be within the town that we care very much for, and feel very much as though we are, I don't even know, something, eh, you know, a draw for the town as well.
Can I ask you, as an abutter, are you more concerned about the way this sign would look from your viewpoint, visual viewpoint during the day? Or are you more concerned about the light that you would see at night? Because we, we've discussed potentially putting limits on when it can be on at night.
I'm concerned overall, not just with my vantage point of this sign, but the fact that the town would allow an illuminated sign of this nature in this particular area. We, we had to, um, they came in and they did the, um, flashing speed limit signs. Initially, they were going to put that directly across the street from my home, and directly in front of my neighbor's home. I happened to walk out to get my mail that day and saw them, what looked like surveying the area, so I was able to ask them about what was going there, and when they told me what was going there, I immediately went back in the house and got on the phone to say, a flashing speed limit sign, like right, right here, right where our homes are? Like, there are four homes here, and right in front of this home. Um, quite frankly, I was incredulous that that was even being considered when we spoke with, when I spoke with, um, the town, and, um, my neighbor did as well. We were informed that it was state walk, that it was required, um, but they did work with us, and they did move it closer to the school.
Well, I will say that that was the school's decision, because Tom, when we went out there with the town, we were informed that there was no option, but we went out because we saw that it was going to be, you know, offending to our neighbors.
Yes, yes.
So, I actually was on that walkabout with the surveyors, and we worked very hard to figure out how we could measure differently, keep the kids safe, because, because the crosswalk has been moved, so it becomes far more dangerous, you know, and you know how those trucks come over. So, try and get it closer to the school, and Tom Ferry was amazing, and we all worked together to try and re-
And I appreciate them.
Do that. And I know that, I know that flashing signs aren't wonderful, but I also know that those are, um, I did a lot of research on this, they're called feedback signals, and they actually have been proven to reduce speeding in towns more than police giving out tickets, because the, the basic premise is that people do wanna do the right thing, and sometimes they just aren't paying attention, but when they see, they see that feedback, they will put on their brakes. And it's, um, it, this was started in a small town in the Midwest, and they put one of these out, and they realized that they were giving far fewer tickets, so my feeling is.
I'll be honest with you, it works for me, coming over the.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get sidetracked, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going, we're going off track. Were there any other butters that had, or you also, do you have anything else you wanted to say, or?
Thank you.
Okay, so, good, this is what you're naming out, out of the record?
Mandy O'Donnell, one fifty, Center Street, we're, we're a lot, so where you were the, were the direct abutter, um, straight across from the current existing sign. And I wanna second, um, um, our, our neighbor's comments about, you know, a, a beautiful job. Um, I also wanna, um, second her comments about the concerns about just the general character of, of, of the town and our street, and our rural neighborhood, that's no longer an essence in our rural neighborhood. Um, and, um, or no longer, since, since the school's gone in, it's, it's lost a lot of that aesthetic, a, a lot of that appeal. Um, and, and none of the other, you know, schools, the town hall, there's a meeting, sometimes they'll put up one of the highway signs if it's something that urgent. Um, and I, I do understand the parts about, you know, needing to communicate, I think most people you're trying to communicate with are gonna get most information from their phone, not from a flashing sign these days, um, but the fact that everyone else is excluded, and they're asking for an exception, um, the, the other questions I really had are sort of about safety. Um, what's been looked into about safety, now people are coming, and there's a marquee there with a few letters on it saying, congratulations, seniors. And now we have these flashing messages or things that are happening, and is this gonna be get a less safe area when we talk about safety for people to, to stop or slow down or to look? Um, when, when things are happening, like, let's be honest, how, how many lights are in this town, and where are they? Right, there's one down at Main Street, and then it's right here, a few years ago, we got the walkway that was further down with the school construction, they moved those crosswalks up. That's, those lights are on, those are coming through our windows all night, you know what? Those are for safety, they're horrible, we, we just like them, but those are for safety. This is, this is sort of, to me, is over and above the speed limit signs, it's over and above the, um, you know, the, the signs for the crosswalk, and those are, you know, those are necessary things. Um, I, I also, besides the safety piece, I'm just questioning where, were there any other locations that this was thought of to maybe put? I mean, we have these new buildings, um, and it's sort of being put right back across where we are, and as the, the closest abutter, I know that it seems like a sign, at least this way, I, I can't read it, but light trespass for the school and my property is, is a massive ongoing issue. Um, it's something we continually, superintendent James tries her best, tries to address, so, I know it's state-of-the-art, but we're, like, a year in, and, I mean, one o'clock in the morning last night, again, my kid's up, my dog's up, and can't get back to sleep, we, 'cause there's, the lights are on all over the school, um, not just the, the sign now, but, you know, we have the lights from the school glaring into our yard. Um, so I just, I'm curious if there's any other places that the school considered to put the sign, or any other way to place the sign, to get their message across to the people who. to get their message across to the people who I think are most important to if they want to communicate to the students. We do have a loudspeaker. We do hear those in the morning. Those are all additions to our neighborhood and this one just seems one that is more of a a bigger ask. And I I I I love the fact as as a citizen, the town can communicate and if other places want to use that, but as the director of butter, I'm saying, why there? There's a million other places in town we can get these messages across. Um, i- i- in maybe a a less intrusive way. So, um, while again, I I understand it, I get the need to communicate. I just sort of question the safety. I mean, my son goes to ele- elementary school. There's not even a a push button for that for me to walk across the street. But this, but the school has one. There's not a sign up there telling me what's going on, but the school has one. I mean, those are little kids. They don't have those communications and they don't have those systems. I understand we're dealing with the county versus the town. Um, but still, I I ask myself those questions of if it's just, if it's really necessary and i- if, um, I I think one of the main concerns I did have is is certainly if if it is allowed, that that there is some clear, even though we would oppose it, that there is some clear limitation that it's going to be just off by a certain time and it has to actually be off. Because that's probably what issue we face is that the lights don't go off. If anyone drives down that road at twelve o'clock at night or they're coming home late, that stuff is lit up. It it's really, it's it it's really, the light trespass is the biggest issue we have. The school's always been a great neighbor. But I do have to say, construction noise, all those temporary things aside, the students are wonderful. Right at this point with us, the biggest battle we're all facing as neighbors is light trespass. And this sign, this sign is just going to be another, another issue of light trespass. Big campus, there's a lot of, a lot of places to put a sign.
Do you, uh, did applicant want to address the comments or questions, sir?
Sure. Um, we we did talk about potential other locations. The reason why the school building committee felt keeping in the same location was the most important is because that is the main entrance to the admin, um, to the, at Gilbert Hall where the administration is and where all the visitors are supposed to go. So the concern was with the new buildings, there'd be a lot of confusion as to where, um, the main entrance would be located. So if the sign did get moved further south on the property, or I guess that would be east, east on the property, um, that there would be more confusion and people might start trying to go to the other side of the campus, thinking that that's that's where it's located. So, um, the school building committee did think that the most appropriate place was in that location. Light trespass, again, I think we're, as Adele was saying, we're completely in agreement for the sign to be turned off at a certain hour and to come with some agreement with the with the board if it was allowed to be variance. And that it's it's more of a static image. I don't know if even some of that could be put in the language that, you know, flashing, you know, the the sign can't change more than so many times in an hour or something like that, um, with with different messaging. Just to to work with you guys, um, the other issue, talking about the light trespass with the indoor light, I know that is an ongoing issue and and we, it's high on our list and we keep, I know you keep telling me that. And but we are, we we are working. It's a lighting control issue. It's not supposed to be like that. Lights are supposed to automatically shut off. And they just continually keep having problems with the with the lighting control. So we we will, I will go back and personally keep hounding them again because I I can-
We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't want to get off track.
Yeah, I know, I know. Sorry, I was trying to, I was trying to address your issue.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of light, light trespasses and issues. It's just going to be another, another point of everything glowing in the whole neighborhood all, you know, even till nine o'clock at night, it's still, you know, your streets lit up, your 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 streets lit up like, again, like we're a business district and our business districts don't even have that. I don't think it doesn't have that.
And hopefully, if there were limitations at nighttime and at dusk or whenever, uh, other than special occasions or if the town requested, uh, a town meeting or something that they wanted to use it, you were okay with that?
I don't know if the argument is, not to interrupt, but we're not going to go around the circle here. I don't know if the argument is whether it's beneficial or not, or whether the town can use it, or it it's, it boils down to if we let this happen, uh, how many other signs are going to come in and say the school department of Bristol Aggie got their sign and why can't we have one? Uh, so I'm concerned about that a- as well as, again, we're a rural town that you you, our high school doesn't even have a sign that they can change manually. And there's been no issues with that. I I don't know why all of a sudden, because you've done a great job building this addition on there, which you have and it fits the town, why the need for the sign? I I don't know if you've justified it with the fact that it takes two guys to go out and change the sign. Okay, you you've done that for s- for so long, um, continue doing it. You want to say, you know, congratulations, class of two thousand twenty-one, uh, you you can, but it it it, you you get your message across. It it concerns me that we would have a flashing sign to begin with and one that is backlit when it it's clearly something we don't allow. Wouldn't be so bad if it was this is, it's not the size of the sign, that if it was just backlit, but the fact that it's going to change messages two, three, four times an hour, um, to me, it it starts to look tacky at that point.
So I'll address that. It's not going to change two or three times an hour. It's probably going to change once every couple of days. Possibly one day, like if we happen to have a conference there for the foundation dinner, it will have have that one day and change another day. But it's definitely not changing by the hour that, and it's not flashing. I can't, I can't.
Well, you're seeking relief from the whole chapter, which you technically would be allowing flashing signs. So, I mean, it doesn't, we don't, our 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 regulations don't spell out no flashing sign A, no, no rotating sign B or C. You're asking relief for the whole, uh, uh, chapter. So if we grant it to you, technically you would have the option of having it rotate.
If there is an agreement with the town, then we wouldn't have that option. And I think that's-
So you're willing to say that if we allow this sign, it's only going to be able to flash, not even flash, say something and then not say something for another three or four days unless there's a unique circumstance. It's not going to-
I think those are all things that we can write, we can delineate and and figure out. I'm not, I'm amenable to all these things. Because actually, I feel the same way you do. I'm not, I'm not coming here and saying, we're not, the sign is not going to flash and then ha, 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 yes, it is. No, I don't, I don't want it to flash. I don't want it to look like that. I don't want the aggie to look like that. We have, we have a state of the art school now that looks, it that blends in. Some things are, you know, we're still working on some issues with the the building. Uh, but generally, when the construction is done, we're still going to look like the aggie. We're going to look like a bigger aggie, but we're still going to look the same way. And we feel very strongly, just as strongly as you do, that this sign, you know, is not going to be tacky because that's not the way the school operates. It's not going to, you know, be distracting and, you know, it's not going to look like a restaurant or or something like that.
Then what's the need for it, I guess? If if it's not going to be those things, what's it going to accomplish?
Well, it, what we talked about, it can accomplish a lot because we can communicate a lot of information on it that we can't do on. And and yes, we can, yes, we have done it one way for many years, but there is another way to to communicate that we can acu- communicate more effectively and in more communication on this.
Yeah, but is there another way to communicate without changing the characteristics of the town? That 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 concerns me a lot because we all live in a rural town. We all live here for a reason. Well, maybe not all, um, most. And, um, I I I forgot with school, I I, is it, what's the school in Berkeley? I think they have one.
Somerset Berkeley?
Oh, Somerset Berkeley I'm thinking of, um, off of one thirty-eight, right? And it, to me, it stands out like a sore thumb. Um, i- i- and and that's a brand new high school.
All right, just before we go on, I just, I don't want to forget. The, uh, planning board did submit a couple of questions. Uh, this was on, uh, Fri- uh, Friday, uh, June eleventh, um, by Jeff Cavallo, who's a member of the planning board. Um, he just said, I'm not certain if you need our feedback or if we, the planning board members, uh, were, uh, put on the, uh, this for info only, but here are my two cents. Uh, a lot of these, just, uh, off, yeah, a lot of these have been addressed in this meeting, but I do want to make sure that his comments are 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 read into the minutes. Um, I've, well, number one, I fully understand the benefits of elect- of an electronic sign and like the level, uh, level of detail provided in the application, but did not see any detail on the new proposed sign dimensions and planet, uh, insulation height. The applicant provided, uh, three applicable views of the existing sign, which were, uh, which will be replaced by the new sign. But not knowing anything about the new sign makes it very difficult to understand how these images, uh, accurately, uh, define how the addition will really affect the abutters and the drivers on the road, which obviously these things were presented to us, uh, tonight. Uh, number two, will the new sign be equipped with dynamic backlighting control of any kind? For example, running the sign during any clear sunny day requires the sign to run much brighter than to say at night. I don't think it would be wise to run the sign at the maximum backlight brightness day and night. That would be bad for drivers east and westbound as well as the abutters. Uh, number three, uh, I assume the new sign will be double sided, question mark. Four, will the proposed electronic sign be a full multi-color screen like a highway billboard or limited in color palette and function? The question is related to sign, uh, the, this question is related to signage, technical ability and expected content. For example, text and simple art or fully animated full color motion signage. And then number five, can the applicant provide the proposed electronic sign in specification sheets? I think questions two through four would be resolved with that information. So, um, everything he said, I feel like wa- was addressed, um, but I just want to make sure that his questions were read. Is there anything among those questions you feel like you want to address? That was a separate than what you already went into?
No, just to to reiterate, the three images that we did send, they weren't the existing sign. They weren't the actual sign.
Right.
I brought, this was just supplementary that was not in the application to show the height of the existing sign and that we were reducing the height to seven to ten just to show it's lower.
I do think it's cool that it's going to be on the rock.
Yeah. Rock, it's an amazing rock, so. And then, um, in addition to that, uh, I provide an example of a a sign just to show that um, it, all LED signs now are full multicolored. There's no, there's not many messaging boards anymore that you don't have full. So so that, um, it was answered with that, as well as the backlighting and how it would automatically dim. Those features are built into all these signs today.
Right, um.
I was gonna say, I will, I will say first of all, um, a couple, a couple of thoughts. One is I do appreciate you being willing to understand that for the abutters, if the sign were to be put up and approved, that I think it needs to have limited hours of operation. I don't think the abutters after, you know, eight o'clock at night on any normal night unless there's an absolute special reason, should need to have that sign illuminated. Um, and same thing necessarily before seven o'clock in the morning. Keeping in mind winter months, it's still kind of dark at seven, et cetera. I'm I'm thinking of that in terms of the abutters. The other thing I'm thinking about is, um, right now, you know, this is clearly changing the structure of the chapter. If we were to to approve this, having said that, and I understand the need for it completely, I'm I'm newer to the town. I've been here five years. And we moved here on one level for the rural character of it. On the other hand, you know, I think we recognize too that as the town changes, um, and the types of things that we need to draw into the town, this is not going to be, this is not the first and it's certainly not going to be the last time that something like this comes before us. In fact, it might come for us more often, actually, partly as a result of approving this if we do. Um, but also simply because of the nature of looking, the town wants to draw in different types of business and different types of corporate structure into the town. So in different districts, we're going to be faced with this dilemma going down the road with businesses who want to bring in a modern, a modern enterprise or modern buildings or be able to advertise their business. They're going to want to be able to put these signs up similar to what you're talking about now in the same type of character. So that, you know, we could have several of these signs on Center Street or several on one thirty-eight or sent several on, you know, someday on Middle Street for that matter, who knows? Um, and I think that's something that we have to think about a little bit because inevitably, in order for the town to change as much as we want to keep the character, and I don't disagree with with Peter, we also have to recognize that, you know, this is, this is part of moving forward for our community. So, um.
That being said, to the voting members, do you guys want to take it under advisement? Do you prepare to vote on it tonight? What's I want to do?
I would prefer to take this under advisement. I would like to see, um, first of all, I'd like more time to think about it myself, but I'd also potentially like to see, you know, you come back. You were, you were talking, um, superintendent about some modifications perhaps to the the amount of of types of things that would be posted or how long things would be posted for or how long it would be or wouldn't be illuminated for. I would like to see you come back to us with some more information on that.
That's also stuff that we can discuss that for for conditions when we approve it, it's not so much that.
We can, but I, but I, in terms of under advisement, I'd like to see, you know, what you would accept as condition.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, that, Peter.
I'll second that motion, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so we'll, uh, this will be continued to the next public hearing, which is the July uh, twenty-first meeting, taking it under advisement. Uh, we're not going to close the public, uh, input or public hearing portion, which means any new information can still come before us and applicants or abutters still have the right to speak at the next meeting. Uh, but we're just going to just continue the public hearing to that date.
We're going to keep that as a Zoom?
Um, yes, yeah, yeah, we'll.
Keep it as a Zoom and I'll provide it.
Is that okay with, tho- those are here tonight? Is that okay with everybody or is it person better? Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Just wait till they are all set and we'll go on to the next.
Oh, of course, of course.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
All right, so we're just going to move on to the next next item on the agenda, which is to, uh, review, discuss and act the variance extension request for Alex Semelisti, twenty-five forty-four Pleasant Street, map twenty-four lot six and, uh, case that was zero three, uh, twenty. Um, do we need to have three new voting members on this or do you mean?
Yes, it's a new.
Should we, I try, try, do we should try to keep the same ones that were before and not necessarily?
No, it doesn't matter. It's a whole new case.
Okay. So John, we'll just need-
So I will, yourself, uh, Susan and, uh, Peter.
So we'll just reach to you what we have before us. Um, this was submitted by Alex Semelisti. Uh, Dear Dayton zoning board appeals slash Dayton planning board, I hope you are well. I am requesting an extension for the variance granted on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty for my residence at twenty-five forty-four Pleasant Street. We have had our water service upgraded by the town's water department, as stated in the petition's letter. Yet we are ultimately unable to fully proceed with the project at this cu- uh, current time for various reasons. We see light at the end of the tunnel, but I will, uh, as I believe we all do. Thank you, uh, best, Alex Semelisti. Um, and I will just, for, uh, this, the original case was heard on, uh, like I said, August fifth, oh, sorry, October fifth, uh, twenty twenty. He's looking at the voting numbers, were Michelle Lima, Peter Karen and Jonathan Gale. Um, so now we just got before us, uh, Greg and him, his, uh, his extension.
I don't mind giving an ex- oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I don't, I haven't really been on the board, especially as a chair, long enough for extensions. Usually the extensions that come before us are the forty Bs that are with extensions, not so, we don't often see a traditional residential applicant looking for an extension.
It actually is probably going to end up by being more as well as we we've seen a lot over the several, several years. And, um, most of the time it's neglect. That's the reason why things don't get done. Then they come back and and just assume they're going to get an extension, uh, granted by the, uh, ZBA. I have no problem with gi- giving an extension on this, but I don't think it should just be an unlimited extension. We approved it. Uh, the the applicant expressed the need at the time and here it is a year later and the need hasn't been addressed. Um, well, to some extent it has, but part of the, part of, part of approving it last time, I know for myself because I was a voting member, was, uh, living with his mom.
Yes.
I think in that situation, uh, in in the need to to get into a place of his own. Um, I I originally was opposed to it because I I don't think, uh, two um, dwellings on one property, uh, the town doesn't allow it and I I didn't think we should. But listening to his argument, he he convinced me that it wasn't going to be that much of a detriment to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
But with that said, you just can't give somebody a blanket extension. Um, I, I think it should be voted in with a, a timeframe that says, okay, look, you got six more months, other than that, we're gonna let this thing go. Um, it, it's obviously not a concern of enough for, for, for you to react, uh, in this amount of time.
And, uh, Carrie, I know, I got this, uh, through the email, so is, this is all that he's submitted to us, correct? He didn't, I know he put like, uh, for various reasons, and he, did he give us any more reasons, or did he give us a timeframe that he wanted? No, not that we should grant it based on what he wanted, I'm just curious to see.
He did call me by phone. He did explain that he was trying to get some contractors and stuff, but of course with the.
Well, with everything, it's, it's the cost of lumber and the, um, the, the need. Yeah, it was, it was an issue, um.
So, yeah, to go on what you're saying, I don't think this particular case was a neglect type of, uh, type of situation.
I, uh, my personal opinion is I think that, you know, again, he, he didn't specify here what they were. Um, it could have been health issues, it could have been his mom, it could have been COVID, it could have been a lot of other things that got in the way. Um, and I know even a lot of contractors are still way, way, way behind, in terms of scheduling and doing work and so forth as well. Um, I know I'm not a voting member here, but it seems to me that. Potentially, up to a year. I know you talk, it was just Peter just mentioned six months.
Oh, I, I was just throwing six months out there, I'm not saying it should be six months.
Say a, a year, and that's it, at this point, and if, it be simply be if, but not for, he may still need to secure contractors. We don't know for sure if that's the issue, you know, at hand, that contractors couldn't work, or they didn't have enough crew to work, or what it was, so.
What else did he say on, on the phone, Carrie, besides his, uh, for his reasons?
It was more of the, uh, the supplies and then the contractors.
I know if Greg was here, he probably would be voicing all this too, because I know last time we talked, he said a lot about.
He would be better.
The prices of lumber and all that kinda stuff changing, um, so then I, I assume he, he did not state how long he was looking for?
He did not, no, he was, he actually was.
Well, I don't think he can grant more than a year.
I don't think so either.
So, um.
Do you, I mean, do you see, do you think it should be less than a year?
No, no, um. Like Jonathan says, I, I don't know what his reasons for, uh, other than as, as long as it's not neglect. Then I, I don't see a reason that you can't give him another year. Um, I would just at some point say. We've given you enough time, and, and you, you didn't act upon the variance that we gave you, therefore we're not going to renew it. Uh, you should be aware that it's not gonna be, not, not going to be a blanket.
It's non-renewable.
Extension every year.
Right. So when you, when you, when you guys typically, will we grant, uh, extensions? Do we put conditions on saying that this will be, this will be the only extension, or?
No, um, you can put conditions on it, um, I, I don't know what ones that you would put on it, but.
Saying like, you know, the, this, to be a, a, since it's the last.
No, uh, because he has every right to come back before the board a year from now and say.
We could just deny it then if we wanted, so hypothetically, hypothetically.
So you, you wouldn't put any conditions on it.
Right, okay.
Um, so I'd make a motion to, to grant him a, a one-year extension on the, uh.
I agree.
So you, you would second the motion, and then all in favor, or was that, we'll say it.
So, so is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so he's all set. Carrie, I'm on vacation this week, so if I need to come down in person to sign it, I, I'm around, so. Don't, you don't have to worry about sending that through email.
I'll go food tonight, too.
Alright, so we have that, um, that was the only thing that came up. We already discussed, uh, the next meeting, uh, is there any correspondence?
No, just that, uh, the meeting notice that.
Yep, so just so everyone is, is aware, this is the client, uh, client advisory, uh, that came down today, uh, that. Won't read up the whole thing, but just that, uh, the governor, um. Uh, the act, uh, of the open meeting law, uh, the act that extends the governor's, uh, March twelfth, twenty twenty. Orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, uh, general laws, uh, chapter. And then there, uh, section thirty A, section twenty, until April twenty first, twenty twenty, at which time the exception will be repealed. Public bodies may therefore continue to con- uh, conduct their meeting in accordance with the order suspending in the, uh, the open meeting law. And may continue to have remote meetings in full. So basically, we have until April first, twenty twenty, to do, uh, meetings via Zoom, which we've been doing all along. Uh, we could also do, eventually when the technology is here for our space hybrid, if we have a lot of, you know, if things are gonna be a big turnout, we want to meet in person. But have the abutters stay home, or have some members stay home, and some members be in person, we can do that too. Um, and again, then there was no saying that, once you decide in person or Zoom, every meeting going forward has to be one or the other, so we can. If we have a meeting before us, that's just gonna be housekeeping stuff, we can just do that from Zoom, or we can. Meet if we think we have a lot of plans before us that would be easier to see. For example, this tonight would have been harder, I think, to do, have, you know. In Zoom, than I, than if it was just simply approving minutes and voting on the, you know, a case that we had outstanding before us, um. Obviously, if anyone has any significant health concerns, that, you know, they want to stay home for whatever reason, they can certainly do that, um. I, I, you know, with, for a quorum, I guess, it doesn't really matter whether it's, they could have the one, m- member could be at home and the rest could be here, right? There's no.
Right, so before, if you were going to have remote, before that went into place, and we went back to in-person. If some people wanted to attend remotely, you still had to have an in-person quorum.
In, uh, so, okay.
In-person quorum, and then, you know, say one or two members could attend remotely. But the key part on that was you had to have a, a physical quorum.
So we would have to have at least three in-persons?
Yes, this relieves you of that.
Oh, I see, okay. So we could have one person here in person, and then?
Still have one person here, and then the rest of the board, uh, be at Zoom, if that's what they so desired.
Right. Alright, is there any public input? I assume you had nothing else before us? No? Alright, so we are aware of when the next meeting is, so we just go, uh, the last thing we have to do is just, uh, the approval of the meeting minutes from. May twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
I have a motion on the floor, and I will make the motion to approve the minutes for our next meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
No. I want to discuss the sign, because if we're going to vote on it the next meeting. Uh, I wanna be able to dis- uh, I'm sorry, they didn't stay, but they had their choice to stay. Um, but I think we should be able to discuss it some more before, uh, we adjourn.
Just see, I mean, the, the pub, it's not closed, we, we, okay, just say no, yep.
Um, my concern is this, the ZBA has a job to help the resident, not hurt the resident. If you can't help them, then at least don't hurt them.
Right, right, yep.
But I'm not convinced their argument is strong enough to change the, the zoning law. Um, I, I, I don't think they've made a strong enough point that, uh, they can't live without this sign. Uh, not that we're opening a can of worms or setting a precedent, because each case is different, each case is gonna be on its, on its merits. But we're talking about a residential street, uh, yes, it gets a lot of traffic, and there's a school on it, um, but. The building around the corner that houses the, what is it, a dentist and.
An insurance company.
Insurance company, look what we put them through when it came time, uh, you guys weren't here.
Uh, I think I'm on the news board, but it sounds familiar.
Everything from saving the stone wall, to, um, the, the sign had to be a certain size, and, um. But they're just right around the corner from that, and we want to make sure that that building stayed, we didn't allow a drive-through, there's gonna not gonna be a Dunkin' Donuts there, or a restaurant. Uh, these were things that we had set forth, just, you know, keeping with the characteristics of the town. So you, you, if you apply the same standard to here, um, what is it about a, a, an electronic sign? That says we can't go forward without it?
Yeah, it's.
And that's the way I have to look at it. Is it worth changing the zoning bylaw? We, we wouldn't be changing it, do we, we, we granting them a variance to it? Um, just because they don't want two people to go out and have to change a sign? Uh, I, I, I don't buy the argument, it's their way of communicating with the residents, uh, because. I mean, uh, the students, because they've done it for one hundred years now, uh, communicating with whatever form they use now. As, as well as, everybody does have a cellphone, so if there's some kind of an emergency, I, I think they can broadcast it out. Through their students, through their speakers, through the teachers, through the cellphones. Uh, I, I don't know if their argument is strong enough to grant a variance of this magnitude.
It's funny you say that.
I think the other side of it though is, and I'm, and again, I'm, you know, young to the town.
Oh, it's alright, you don't have to.
No, 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 I know we don't have to, but I think, a little, what, what, what I'm thinking about is, you know, they. If I, if I look at what their goal is, and hearing from the superintendent, and knowing what they've done, you know. With the expenditure and the development of this, you know, new campus, if you will, that. The last piece of this, in a way, is some sort of signage that. Keeps the modern component of what they're doing going, and the signage that they're proposing potentially. Provides that modern piece, that last little bit of modern piece that they might need, in order to show, you know, we have this gorgeous building. On this side of the street that's modern and brand new, and then we have this sign here, that's.
Well, they could put up a nice brand new sign.
They could.
It doesn't have to necessarily be lit and have, uh, and it can be lit, it just doesn't necessarily have to be a, a rotating sign or something, or electronic. Because what happens when the police department comes in and says, well, we're public safety, if we wanna get the message out to that there's a bomb scare at the school, or. There's a town meeting, what better place than on one thirty eight where there's ten times more traffic than there is on Center Street? Um, wh- what, what do you say then? If, what, what's your argument gonna be at that point? When you got a brand new police station that's modern, uh, so you have a brand new school that's modern, wh- where do you, where do you draw the line?
I think that's the dilemma, is that if the town ultimately is going to, for, you know, look. It, it, it's one thing to wanna keep the rural component of this, of the town, but it's another thing to recognize that we also, to some extent, have to be able to modernize. In, in certain ways.
Well, that's what we do, we, we put a new police station in, it was a modern police station. We, we, we do other things, uh, we, we.
I mean, what's gonna happen, the same, you could ask the same question, if, if we build a new library, even if it's next door here, for example, or.
Yeah.
Some people want. Do we allow the library then to put in a modern sign so they can announce events at the library?
Well, you're not saying you can't put in a ma- modern sign.
But I mean, an electric sign where they can change it.
That's what, that's what draws the line, that's what separates us from, uh, from a city. We don't have signs that are electronic reading, or, uh, flashing, when, they, they said it won't flash.
Won't flash, you're right.
So I, I won't make that as an argument. It, it, it just concerns me that. When somebody comes before us, they have to make a solid case, and, and that's when I said, we're here to help, not here to hurt, but. I, 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 I haven't seen the solid case. Like I said, the fact that, that it takes two people to change a sign, tough luck. Um, the, the, the fact that they can't communicate with, uh, students effectively, well, that's not true, because you've been doing it for how many years, and there's never been an issue. That, we have a high school with how many kids in it? Nine hundred? Thousand? Eleven hundred? And they don't even have a sign, never mind, um, a, 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 a sign that's, that's.
No, they don't, but I, but I, even there, I think a lot of people would argue that there's a lot of stuff there that needs to change.
I remember, s- few years ago, I had, I was talking with Mallory, the former town administrator. About how she wanted a sign similar to this, that would be rotated more often outside of town hall, and how that, how that couldn't happen.
Right.
So it's kinda like, I, I do, I understand what you mean by the whole can of worms thing that could potentially come down the way, but. If that was a town administrator saying, it would be hard for us to get that for town hall, and she's basically the one that would make that happen. You know, it's cl- clearly something that is gonna be seriously detrimental, well, could be detrimental to the neighborhood. And I remember another case that we had. I think it was the bank that was near Reese's gas station.
Yeah.
That they came before us, while looking for a sign, and I remember how long that case was, with the height, and I don't, you weren't part of the. There's anywhere at the time, but, um, it was like the height, and what, where did there be, would there be spotlights on it? It's on a tough corner, would that be hard for people to see from the bend? And that wasn't even electronic.
Yeah.
And I remember the, the hurdle, not the hurdle, but like, the discussions that we had on that, you know, the size, and, you know, how many colors would be on that sign, and. You know, so it's kinda like, you know, i- if, that sign took so much thought, like imagine, I mean, electronic, and. I- if there was an electronic sign there, or let's say by the former police station where it's more quote-unquote, commercial area. You know, an electronic sign there would not be the, would stick out, and like you were saying about this, the sign for the Somerset School. That street is filled with those signs, and that still is, sticks out.
The other side of this, again, too, and then, look, how many times do, are there events in town? And I'm not saying that they could do this for us, or we'd want them to do it very often, but how many times are there events in town, and nobody knows about it for what reason? There's no sign somewhere to tell anybody, and, you know, yeah, somebody can potentially put it up at that sign outside town hall here or something. And maybe, you know, on that lion sign or something, but for the most part, there are a lot of things that go on around here where people wish they knew about it, and they were aware of it. But there's nothing anywhere telling them, so, you know, that's, if they're willing to do that.
Well, that's, I think, it's a whole different thing for them, because then it becomes, is it then a shared sign? Do we also, you know, that's, I think. Suggesting that, you know, yes, you can have it, but we have access to it to put what we want, I think that's a whole different discussion, I mean.
It's gonna be a lot even more of a busy type sign.
Then you, cause then, then what's gonna happen, then I have the fire station saying, well, can you notice we're doing a fire thing test, and then you see the library saying, well, can you notice we're having this on it? And then, who polices what goes on the sign, so I don't know.
And that's a, and that's something, that's why I was asking the question to them, if we wanted you to put something for town meeting, could you do it? Because I think the question is, how far does this can of worms get opened, in terms of what they're gonna do? Is it just gonna be for town events? Is it just gonna be for school events? You know, and that's, that's, there's two different issues. One is how they're gonna post it, and the second, well, three, one is the, the look of the sign. And the third is the lighting of the sign.
Uh, I've always looked at a case that comes before as, is, if I vote a certain way, what are my arguments? If I vote against something, or, or whatever, vice versa, you have to be able to t- tell Marguerite, when she makes this decision. What your argument is, and it's no different than being before a judge, because that's where it would end up. Your, your, your written opinions would end up in front of a judge who's going to say, well, the board members didn't consider this, or they considered this and didn't consider that. Um, and so I, I look at this, and, and, and I have to honestly say. Where is, what is the benefit beyond, um, prestige almost of this electronic sign? Like I said, you, you've done a beautiful job with the school, uh, just like we've done a beautiful job with our, our police station. And, and I'm only referring to, to back to the police station, because when they were before us, they had talked about a, an electronic sign. I don't know if you guys remember that, um, this is when, going back several years ago now, um. And it was no way we allowing, uh, a, a, a sign like that, and.
And that was a busy street, that, that, a commercial area.
Street that if you're gonna, right.
That's where it would fit, i- if it was gonna fit anywhere, that's where it would have fit.
Where it would have gone. Anyway, just something to think about, we don't have to be, be a dead horse.
It's a conversation to be had.
Yeah.
And to consider more.
Okay, so if you want that motion to adjourn, just say so, and I'll make it, I'll second it.
Is there a mo- do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, it's good.